Thank you. Good morning, all. Welcome to the open session for Carroll County Commissioners for Thursday, August 7th. And as we prefer to do, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And because that chair is empty, you get to be first.
I guess so. Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody. I'll be very brief today. So first of all, I had the privilege of attending the Tawny Town History Museum's 21st anniversary celebration over the weekend, which featured the installation of the latest school bell in what's become an ongoing collection for the museum. This one belonging to the former Harney School in Harney. As always, the History Museum does a phenomenal job. The turnout was awesome. And even though it was a little overcast that day, it was incredible, the amount of heat that that bell collected waiting to be put into the installation. But phenomenal job as always. So second, I had the pleasure of attending two national night out celebrations this week, one in Union Bridge and the other in Tawny Town. Each year, I always try to get to at least two of them in District One, and I was glad to be able to do so again this year. Both events were incredibly well organized, incredibly well attended, and it shows just how much law enforcement matters and means to our communities in the county. You know, we would not be anything we are without our law enforcement, and you know, God bless them for what they do even in the most difficult times and circumstances. And finally, as you'll probably have heard, the Maryland Public Service Commission is considering a schedule for reviewing the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project, which would be sometime in March 2027, which is a year later than what PSEG, the company responsible for MPRP, has been demanding. And as you'll know, in recent weeks, PSEG has been assailing citizens with hundreds more lawsuits, using the courts to compel people to admit them onto private property for the purposes of surveying for the power lines, all the while trying to undermine and cut short the time those very same people have to organize legally against them. You know, the Public Service Commission is doing the right thing by considering a just and respectable schedule, other than the truncated timeframe that PSEG has been attempting to pursue. And very shortly, Stop MPRP Incorporated is going to be putting together some guidelines for the comments in support of that fair schedule. And so I would encourage everyone in the county, whether or not your property is affected, to support the lengthened timeframe for the process for the power lines. You know, again, the Public Service Commission is doing the absolute right thing by taking into account the concerns of citizens over the timeframe for this. And so please do not forget to email them, to write to the Public Service Commission. The deadline is August 14th, if I remember correctly. So, you know, please certainly do that. And that's all for me this morning, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Just a couple of things real briefly. First and foremost, just wanted to just give my sympathy to the families, the family and the folks involved over in Mount Airy. I know Commissioner Guerin's gonna, I'm sure, talk about that, but I just wanted to mention that as well. Clearly something, I think it's been weighing on everyone's mind in the community. Just a very tragic situation, and heart and thoughts go out to the family and friends of that child that was lost. Secondly, just wanted to mention real briefly that today is the 86th anniversary of the Historical Society of Carroll County, which was founded in August 7th of 1939. Historical Society began meeting early that year and had elected officers, but the action of the State Tax Commission on the date made them official, being August 7th. Five days after the incorporation, they purchased the Shelman House, which many of us know on Main Street in Westminster, for a sizable sum of $3,000. And this began the steady growth of the organization to what it is now. There's a lot of things going on over there. I know a lot of people have interest in our local history, and I can tell you that firsthand, there's going to be a lot of really interesting things coming up in the next year or so, one being the 250th anniversary of our country, which there will be a pretty dynamic exhibit. I know they're working on with that as well. And also, just wanted to mention real briefly to Commissioner Vigliotti's comments that Tuesday evening was national night out throughout the county, and there were a number of locations in Westminster. It was quite a nice turnout by everyone involved, ranging from nonprofits such as the Boys and Girls Club. I know they were in Westminster, and they were also, I believe, in Tawny Town, a lot of other nonprofits, community organizations, and just a great opportunity to interact and see everyone out in the community. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Good morning, Carroll County. Yes, appreciate the comments that have been made prior to this. It has been almost a week since those events down in Mount Airy. I want to take the opportunity, it's been a long week, too, obviously, for everybody there, and especially the family, as they continue just to come to grips with what happened right there in their backyard. I want to take the opportunity, though, to thank the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, Mount Airy Police Department, and the town mayor, Larry Hushour, and the town council for how they've handled the situation and for the actions that they have taken and they're continuing to take. There are donations being made to Mason's family at this point, at this time. Grates are being covered up. There was a vigil Sunday evening, which was very, very nice down at Watkins Park, and the weather cooperated, and it was a huge turnout. And the town has actually convened already. There was a special meeting earlier this week to discuss what they're going to do to make sure this never happens again. The family members were allowed to speak, which I thought was very important. Obviously, they're upset, but they're concerned. And I commend the mayor for ordering a task force to take a look at all the drains and everything in the county that need to be fixed so this never happens again. He's asked for a deadline to get that done, so me and every other resident of Mount Airy expects that to happen. And I would encourage other municipalities to take the opportunity at this time to do the same thing, to take a look at what you have to ensure that this doesn't happen, and maybe you'll uncover some other issues that need to be fixed. It looks like the solution to some of these issues isn't expensive, is not an expensive one, but it obviously does need to be undertaken. So, thank you to everybody down there as they continue to deal with this. And we've already, the mayor knows, I can speak for the entire commission, the mayor knows we're here. If he needs, if he needs anything from us, I've spoken to him almost daily. And again, just appreciate everything they've done and everybody's concern for that community down there in the town as they continue to work through this. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, such a tragic event, man. PSEG, you mentioned, and I've been saying, as a past contractor, our best ammunition against that project is to slow them down because they can't afford not to complete on time. And if this schedule goes through, there's no way they can. So, please, please write and speak out, whether it's your property or not. Last week was the 4-H Fair, and we went to the cake auction and livestock sale, and it's just great to see all the kids and how hard they've worked, and see all the families, businesses, farms that support the kids that have worked so hard. The cake auction, that money goes to the fair itself, and the 4-H kids come in and volunteer to make a cake, make a pie, make cookies to be sold to raise money for the fair. The livestock auction, the majority of that money goes to the owner of the animal, and some of them are last year seniors, and I'm sure they use it towards whatever they're doing after school. But also, a lot of the kids put that money into next year's animal and what they're going to do. So, it's a great, great fair, great events all week. I think their food sales were down because it was so hot, but that's been this summer. National Night Out, I went to Manchester and Hampstead. Hampstead had a good turnout. Hampstead Carnival, which we also need to support, is a week early this year. So, that was a little bit of a conflict. The carnival was going on, and they moved their national night out up to four to six to try not to conflict, but I'm sure it still kept the crowd down. Manchester was packed, and this year, most years, they have a helicopter, they have something there that's a real attraction. They didn't this year, but the state's attorney's office gave out stuff, the local fire company gave out stuff, and it was, it was interesting. Such a crowd. They give out, a lot of them give out free hot dogs. Manchester ran out of rolls. They had hot dogs, so you could take a hot dog and a napkin, but they were out of rolls. It was, it was ironic, but a good problem with such a great crowd. So, support the towns and support Hampstead Carnival. Next week's Mako, great, great learning sessions, great opportunities to meet people from other counties or Baltimore City that have similar issues that we do, and that we look forward to doing that. Because of that, there's no open session next week. State's Attorney's Building, there will be a groundbreaking at 1:00 p.m. today for that building, and everybody's welcome, and a little bit of talking, not much, and shovel, shovel full of dirt, and life moves on. So, but you're welcome to come. Anything else for priority, Carroll? Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing, proposed enactment and amendment to Chapter 90 for animals. And before our attorney tells us some ground rules, if you're here to be part of the public hearing and speak, please fill out a card in the back and bring it over to that desk, and she will call you, and we'll verify if anybody's on phone at the same time. So, what's our rules?
Good morning, Commissioner. This is a public hearing, the purpose of which is to hear public comments on some proposed amendments to our Chapter 90, which is our animal control ordinance. With us is Karen Baker, the director of the Carroll County Humane Society, and she does our animal control services as well. The new code provisions concern trap, neuter, release of cat colonies, and they create authority for the licensing of cats. And there's some other additional clarifications on some animal behaviors, such as excessive dog barking and tethering of dogs. This, this code provision was advertised in the Carroll County Times on July 24th and July 31st. And again, each person is entitled to, or encouraged to speak. You get three minutes and fill out a card if you want to speak on the, whether you're for or against the proposed ordinance. Karen Baker is here, as I said. She has a quick slideshow to go over the quick changes with you, if that...
And our options today are essentially to leave the public record open for 10 more days.
Yes, it's a fairly extensive set of amendments. You may want to chew on them after you hear the comments from everybody and from Ms. Baker.
And then sometime after 10 days and maybe more public input, we could adopt it, we could adopt pieces of it, we could not adopt it.
Correct, yes.
And so that's the options, and that's what you're speaking about today. So, thank you, and thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I, I won't take you through our whole slideshow, as I've really already addressed all of it with you, and I know that we are going to have, quite a few people want to speak about this. I want everyone to remember that's in the room that our mission is all the same, and it is to save these cats and to provide the best life for them, whether they are feral cats, house cats. And I want to ensure that we're all working together to do that. The, what we've proposed is based on the fact that we're the animal care and control authority, and we are responsible for taking these cats that are unwanted by the public into our care. And we need to address that problem out in the field, and the current law does not provide any ability to do that. We have the ability to care for approximately 70 cats within our building. That is unsustainable with what we have going out on, going on out in the community. I think that we should allow people to speak, and my objective after this is that all of these people in this room who are here because they care about these cats and they have cared for them over the years, that we can all come together and, and find a way to solve the problem. Some points through this, I think that licensing and the regulation of the colonies is going to be a problem for many people. The intent behind that for the Humane Society is to get a listing of where these colonies are and who is caring for them, so that we can protect those cats. Our, our hope is to provide revenue for the county that at some point can be returned in grants to our community for spay neuter specifically. And with that, I'll allow the comments to open up.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you, you want to say anything before public comment or wait till after?
I prefer to wait till after.
Okay. Do we have anybody on the phone?
I have no one on the line, sir.
Okay, thank you. You got anybody?
I have a few. First, I believe, and if I butcher your names anywhere, please forgive me, Suzette Baker?
Come to the microphone and you, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Let me just say this. I've been hitting the ground for 18-plus years in this community, running Carroll Feral Cat Care, a nonprofit, through the Community Foundation. So, I've seen everything that's going on out there. I've been helping the community with trapping, spay neutering. What I would like to say is the biggest issues we're having is the funding. We need more funding from the shelter to help the community pay for spay neuters. We also need more assistance with trapping items. The shelter, animal control, does not have enough traps to go around to help the community. We, as nonprofits, have a few, but not enough. So, we really need help with spay neutering, which is the funding. We need equipment, and we do need people on the ground from animal control. They need more people out there in the community to help with trapping, because there's just not enough rescues out there to do this for the individuals. So, we really need more assistance, and that probably means more, you know, bodies at the Humane Society to help us do what we need to do. The other piece, there's a piece in there regarding kittens. I just had this conversation with Karen. A lot of people will not get the mother. They'll bring hordes of kittens into the shelter, but I don't know how we're going to force people to trap the mom to make this stop. I mean, it's just getting worse every year. I think this is the worst it's been. So, we really need to get more communication out there to the community. We need marketing. We need something to get people to understand that the shelter is not a bad place. The shelter is there. Animal control is there to help everyone in the community. It has a negative impact right now. A lot of people, I have people emailing me today about this whole session, how bad it is. But yes, do we license? No, because people are not going to go onboard for that. But I think we just need to get a better understanding that there's money, resources there for the community to help the nonprofits and to help the people in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is Joseph Lovchek.
Do you mind if I sit?
Sure.
I didn't want to be this early in the group. I'm not a public speaker. My name is Joseph Lovchek. Along with my partner, Ruth Johnson, we run Metro Ferals of Maryland. We've been doing this since 2007. We run two clinics a month at Green Acres Pet Center in Mount Airy. We make reservations for up to 70 cats, and that's what we did last Sunday. Seventy-five cats came into our spay neuter clinic, and so we roughly do 150 cats a month. We've been doing this for almost 20 years now, or close to it. We've worked with animal control and the Humane Society here, doing their animals as well. The problem I have is a number of things with this proposal, especially the TNR part. I think it's ill-advised and will have negative consequences. As far as the cat licensing, I'm not an expert on that, but there is an organization called Ali Cat Allies, who is very well-first on that. They're an international organism, an international ground organization that's worked with municipalities and, and cities to have spay neuter programs, and they have a lot of experience with the licensing and the negative effects of that, many places, and they have references to this that have been discontinued because of the negative impact. Their, the article that they have says, "Cat licensing, a license to kill." It ends up with having a lot more cats come through the shelters and having to be euthanized. My biggest issue is with the TNR language. It's, it's very ill-advised. Number one, a minor thing, trap neuter release is an older term, is not used very much anymore. Trap neuter return is used to specify that those animals go back to the colony that they came from, to the location they came from, to the caretaker that came from. A requirement for our spay neuter process is that there is somebody that's taking care of these cats. They'll be trapped 100% in that colony. They will be ear tipped, rabies and distemper vaccines and revolution vaccine, and they will return to where they were, and they will be cared for. That's what we need. What we need, rather than this, is a law that says any outdoor cat, whether it's tame or feral, that is released outdoors, or allowed outdoors, should be spayed or neutered, and should work with an organization such as ours to get them all fixed. The provision of having 25 adult cats maximum in a colony, we don't form those colonies. The cats form those colonies. And 25, what are you going to do when there are more? We, we helped a dairy farm trap 140 cats, three trappings. They got all 140 cats. What do we do with the other 115 cats? Anyway, that's, 100% should be the requirement. There's ways to get 100%. A lot of people don't think of it. Our work is education. We try to educate people, and, and we've tried to educate this organization here, too, and apparently not very successfully.
Please, please finish your thoughts.
Pardon me?
Your time's up. Please finish your thoughts.
Okay. As far as taking kittens out of the colonies, that's also ill-advised. A lot of well-meaning people take the kittens from the colonies, and they bring them to animal control, and animal calls, and animal control is inundated with that. The thing to do is to leave them with their mothers. There's their best chance for survival when they get to be three months old and can have a rabies shot. Then they should be trapped along with the mother, fixed and returned. Get their inoculations, get spayed or neutered, get their ear tipped. If you require microchips, that's a little more expense to these people that are funding it primarily themselves, although the vouchers from, from animal control has been very helpful, or Humane Society has been very helpful as well. But the requirement needs to be education, required spay neuter, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Next is Julie Faulkner.
I'm going to opt to sit, too, if that's okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Julie Faulkner. I am the TNR Coordinator and Vice President for Friends of Montgomery County Animals. Montgomery County, an adjacent county, we experience largely the same challenges that Carroll County deals with when it comes to community cat management. First, I'd like to address some misconceptions about how trap neuter return works. Colonies are not established in an effort to reduce the euthanasia of feral cats. These aren't cat sanctuaries or commercial kennels. People aren't pre-selecting the location. Cat colony is simply a group of cats that have congregated around a food source, typically multiple food sources in an urban suburban environment, and TNR is a proactive response to the existence of the cats in the territory they already inhabit. We share the county's goals of reducing outdoor cat numbers, mitigating nuisance issues, protecting animal and human health, but as currently written, the proposed ordinance amendment would not achieve these goals. It would be a step backward, implementing approaches that other municipalities have tried and subsequently removed or revised because they simply didn't work. Requiring caretakers to register cat colonies will deter caregivers from reaching out for help. That's going to make it harder for TNR nonprofits to gain the trust and cooperation of cat feeders, which is key to sterilizing an entire colony. People who feed cats are diverse group. We deal with all types, and some are nervous of doing anything related to the government. We still occasionally encounter people who think microchips and cats allow the government to spy on them. We have to dispel those misconceptions and win the people's cooperation so that we can actually get all of the cats in the group sterilized and vaccinated. But asking people to register with a government agency is not going to help our cause. Many local governments have discovered registration programs like this sound good on the surface, but they cost more to administer than they bring in, which results in a net loss to animal control budgets. The animal welfare field, we've been doing TNR in this country for over 30 years. We have decades of research and case studies from across the U.S. about what makes for an effective community cat ordinance. We know that the most effective ordinances focus on facilitating TNR. They avoid measures that hinder participation, such as caretaker registration or random limits on cat numbers. I believe that the revised amendment will create significant barriers to TNR and that as a result, we'll see fewer cats in Carroll County being vaccinated and sterilized and fewer volunteers being recruited to do this work. This is going to result in more problem situations, more demands on animal control, increased numbers of cats and kittens surrendered to the shelter, and higher costs for taxpayers. Obviously...
Please finish your thoughts.
Okay. I know this isn't what the county wants, and I understand that there are some goals that we want to give animal control more ability to compel cat caregivers to participate in TNR, and I will share some resources. Managing Community Cats: A Guide For Municipal Leaders, published by the Humane Society of the United States, is a great resource. I will share that and links to other resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Roxanne Jaeger.
Good morning.
This is new to me. I do this individually, fully, at my expense. I have a colony I take care of next door to me. The owner had passed away. I took over the feeding. The son who now owns it graciously let me on his property to feed the cats. They don't belong to anybody. I can't manage them. I can't control them. It's hard to trap them. They have numerous places to hide. It's just hard. You can't corral cats any more than you can bees or birds or, you know, anything else. I know I will have a problem with the 25 limit. I don't know exactly how many I have, but I'm sure it's 25 or a little bit over. It's just that me, as an individual, taking care of this colony, it's expensive. The food has gotten outrageously expensive. I thank God for Metro Ferals and Green Acres Pet Center. They have been a big help. They loan out traps and provide low-cost spay and neuter, but they're extremely popular, and it's extremely hard to get an appointment to get any new cat that comes into my colony fixed. I'm sure several of the cats in the colony I care for are not feral. They're probably strays. They were probably lost or dumped by somebody. I'm very reluctant to give out the address out there, because if people know that there's a colony, and they don't want their cat anymore, they'll simply take it to that location and dump their cat, knowing it'll get cared for. So I'm kind of worried about, I do not want to give out where I feed them. So I just wish, as Commissioners, you would really emphasize to the public to spay and neuter your pet, keep your cats indoors if at all possible. If they're out, they should be fixed, neutered or spayed, and then therefore wouldn't venture off and impregnate a female and get into a fight and need medical help that way, or the female gets out, wouldn't get pregnant, and then they dump the kittens. Right now, I have found in the colony I care for, I saw a pair of kittens, and I've seen since about a month ago. Now I've seen two more. It's a mama and four kittens. Where they're at, they're in a scrap metal pile is where they live, and I feed them around it. It's going to be very difficult to catch them. And according to provision G.I., the last provision, where I'm supposed to remove from the site immediately and give appropriate care, and they're all kittens, are the responsibility of the colony manager, that's quite a burden I'm not going to be able to handle. The cats are going to do what they're going to do. I'd have no control over what they want to do, what size, whether they come and go. It's really up to them. They only come to me because I have food. And when their bellies are full, they're back to avoiding all human contact. So it's not an easy thing to do, but I love doing it. I'm glad I can help these cats. But being regulated, I'm not going to be able to meet these regulations, I can tell you right now. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually do have one more.
So I live in Sykesville, and I maintain a colony of about six, well, not about, it's six feral cats for about 13 years now. Our neighborhood, when I moved in in 2000, had one cat that I would see, and that was it. By 2010, we had over 40 cats running our street, one street. We were overrun, didn't know what to do. None of us were educated in how to handle this situation. It started because one neighbor let their female cat out all the time, not fixed, in and out, asked him about getting it fixed. He said, "I don't have the money." We were a young couple, married, no money ourselves either, didn't know what to do. Another neighbor had a barn, and she would talk about people just abandoning cats. I thought she was a little crazy, and then I watched it happen one day, sitting outside with my child. A car rolls up, they dump the cat, and so she's got a number of cats. In 10 years, we have 40-plus cats. One neighbor found metro ferals, and since then, well, actually, within two years, we had every cat in the neighborhood fixed. The problem is solved. We feed them, we take care of them. She has a majority of them on her property. If she goes on vacation, she calls me. I take care of them, vice versa. We've worked it out so that everybody's fed, we get their shots, everybody's taken care of, so that they're no longer a nuisance. I don't sit in my front yard and see cats running around looking sickly. I don't see anything negative anymore that we used to see. And that's all because people took the time to educate us and to help us solve the problem. I love that the Humane Society is looking at this as an opportunity for us all to communicate and fix this together. A lot of work has been done over the years to lower these feral cat populations, and I'm afraid that by regulating, having to license this, will prevent people like myself from doing this. Six cats would cost me, I believe, only $30 a year, but $30 a year is a lot. These are my medical bills. I brought them in in case anybody wanted to look at them. I've never been to a forum. I don't know what's done, but there's medical bills for six cats for 13 years. It's insanely expensive, and I'm willing to keep doing it. I'm not willing to take on more cats on my property because I know what I can handle. Other people can handle more. I don't know about putting limits on things, because I do that personally. I think that we should have, you know, some ideas that I had was that maybe instead of licensing, we could do a volunteer database or something where we tell the Humane Society, "Hey, I've got a colony," or "I watch a colony," or something that we volunteer to do together as a community since we all have the same agenda, the same things in mind. So that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. Commissioners, any comments?
I'll make a motion to conclude the public hearing and keep the record open for 10 calendar days.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Did you want to add anything after the public comment?
I think there's a little misunderstanding that I just wanted to clarify. The colony registration on agricultural communities or agricultural properties is free. The registration for a colony would be $25, and the registration of the caretaker is free. So I just wanted to clear that up. But also, the proposal to 5A, which is restraint, that it would include, that currently only speaks about dogs, that would include that no intact cat can be left outside. So it would include cats in that. So that would cover that intact cats can't be free roaming.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
So I'm not arguing that this is not an issue. I mean, it certainly is, and it's an educational process for me personally. I don't have any cats, so I'm learning as we go along here. This may not be germane to this particular issue, but, I mean, we do get our share of text amendment changes as a board. Some of them we ask for, some of them are brought to us. My concern going forward is that we are continuing to take a look at these one-off, and what I've already intimated to the staff is that I would like us to be compiling these issues as we go along. I know there are others that are out there that are totally different than this particular issue, but the list of text amendment changes and things we need to look at is growing. And I don't like taking a look at these as one-off issues. I think it's important that we, at the board, at some point, do what we've done in the past. I think we convene a workshop to take a look at several text amendments that needed to be made. Some of them are related to the others, some of them are not. That's why I think it's important to take a look at these all at once. I'm not comfortable making any sort of decision on this today, and I got to be honest. I would much rather work towards getting that working group together for the Commissioners to take a look at these text amendments, and the way the process works is that we decide what we want to put forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then they take a look at it, and then we can make decisions as we go. But I'm not a fan of doing these without having a group where we're looking at all them at once, because it is time-consuming as well, and I think it creates a lot of work. So again, not that this issue isn't important, but I just don't feel like I know enough to make a decision today, and I would much rather move forward to the solution that I suggested, where we've got a lot of text amendment changes, we've got citizens reaching out to us, and we take an opportunity to look at all those at the same time, and I think that is the most efficient way of addressing issues like this. So I'm just not ready to make any sort of decision right now. Obviously, I understand there's two sides and concerns on this, and I am also not really prepared today to make a decision on this. I know the motion was to leave this open for 10 days. One thing I do want to bring up, and I know I brought this up when we previously had some conversations about some of what's in here, and I don't know how we can talk about maintaining cat colonies and control of animals when, if we go to Section 90.05, which is under restraint for dogs, it talks about the owner of the dog should keep the dog restrained or effective control at all times. That's not fundamentally possible. I've seen this numerous times in the city of Westminster where someone will have a dog that's not on a leash, and yes, you may be able to call your dog back, but I've seen dogs get aggressive towards other dogs that are not on a leash. I've seen them do it to the public, and to me, that is a concern within this language, and I think it's something that needs to be revised. You know, for safety first and foremost, I just think that is something that, you know, we've spent a lot of times talking about cats, and we're talking about safety, and I get that, but to me, this is a serious concern to me. I do not like this section the way it's drafted right now. That's all for me.
Well, like Commissioner Garen has mentioned, I certainly wanted to, you know, further review what we've learned today. As Commissioner Gordon pointed out, there are a couple of concerns I have about the language as well, but I'm not yet ready to address those, because I'm still doing some research into them. So I think it's probably prudent for us to leave the record open for 10 days for further information gathering and also to see what anybody else might have to say about it.
And, yeah, we don't have a choice, I don't think, other than leave the record open for 10 days, and that would close the public comment to this, and then we need to decide how we want to move forward.
So maybe you can clarify that thing, because my concern is always, once you start this process, it just goes. So if we hold the record open, closes in 10 days, is there a requirement for this board to take action at any time? Will we still be in the situation where we can...
No. We can do nothing. We can take part of it. We can take all of it. Yeah, it's a, yes, it's just, I think it's prudent to close the public comment period, and that's all we're doing. We're not promising anything.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Commissioner Kyler. Appreciate it.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
How long have you been in the position?
The position itself, since 2017.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item, exercise option to purchase ag land preservation easement.
Morning. All right. Great to see everybody this morning.
Great to see you, too.
We have a beautiful farm for you this morning for final approval. Currently, we're sitting at 81,280 acres. This farm's going to add around 145 acres. So we're before you today to ask for final approval for the David and Elizabeth Shriver property, and we do have Mr. Shriver at the back of the room, sitting back there with us today, so we appreciate him coming today. And this is also for the Carroll County Ag Preservation Program. The property is going to be consolidated. It's at 356 Sawmill Road and 401 Deep Run Road in Westminster. Property consists of 145.262 acres. We're retiring 17 lot rights within District 1. The fair market value of the land only was $1,504,000. The fair market value of the land only was one million, five hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars per our county points-based appraisal. The cost to the county will be one million, fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents, which is seventy-two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents per acre, which is seventy percent of the fair market value. Here's where the farm sits, near Union Mills and other preserved properties. Here's a wider view of the property as it sits. So once again, we're here for final approval for the David and Elizabeth Shriver property, three fifty-six Sawmill Road and four oh one Deep Run Road in Westminster, one hundred and forty-five point two six two acres. We are retiring seventeen lot rights in District One at a cost to the county of one million, fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents.
I'll make a motion to exercise an option to purchase an easement on the David M. Shriver and Elizabeth H. Shriver property in the amount of one million, fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? I would just like to point out, and you included that here, the last time we talked about this property was December of 2024, to get moving forward with it. So, thank you for the effort since then.
No problem.
I'll just make one brief comment. I appreciate the property owner coming in today. I know this is a process. I understand this process pretty well. I went through this a number of years back with a family farm of our own, and truly appreciate you considering this and going through the process. So thank you for coming in, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now, a briefing discussion on the update on the master plan process.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
Thank you, sir.
So, as you noted, I'm here to give you an update on where we are with the Carroll County Master Plan update. The last time I was here was, I think it was either late January, early February, just before we embarked on our series of open houses to get some public input on where the public feels the direction of the master plan should be headed. So I want to catch you up a little bit on what we heard at those open houses and what we've been doing since then, and take any questions that you have. So just really briefly, our first phase of this update process is what we call the assessment phase. It's really kind of taking stock of where we are right now, what's changed since the last master plan was adopted, and starting to get some, some sense of what data and information and feedback we want to feed into our, our actual update. So just to recap really quickly, we had a series of work sessions with this body as well as the Planning Commission last summer, about this time last summer, to identify some of the big ideas that folks thought were really important to cover with the master plan update. We refined those into what we call the driving ideas. We tested those in an open community survey, and a few new ideas emerged, and I'll touch on those in just a minute. We've also, over the course of the past nine months, been gathering and presenting data on who we are, where we've been, and where we might be headed. So we shared that information in a series of open houses, got some reaction from the public, and some feedback that we can incorporate moving forward. We've also been periodically connecting with various youth groups to try to get the young folks take on things as well and incorporate that as much as we can. And as I mentioned, we've been examining the trends that have been happening over the last ten years that could affect the direction that we want to go in the future. Just to recap, those five driving ideas that, that came out of our summer work sessions, those included housing options for households of all kinds, an economy that supports the community, a commitment to rural Carroll County, infrastructure that meets the needs of tomorrow, and working together to plan the future. Since last, last summer, we've been having a number of work sessions with the Planning and Zoning Commission at their regularly scheduled meetings. This list here just shows you the range of topics that we've covered with them, really to build a foundation of understanding of the things that are, the forces that are at work right now that could influence the master plan. Those included a series of presentations on what we call topics and trends. Those are the things that are really, what's been happening over the last ten years, how our demographics have been changing, how our infrastructure has been changing, some of the housing needs that have emerged, what we've done to actually implement the plans that have been adopted, how land use has been changing, economic development has been changing, and where we are in terms of how we coordinate with other jurisdictions. You see there are some of the other studies and presentations that we had. It's really, again, just trying to build an understanding of the, the breadth of forces at work and influencing planning. I do want to highlight the municipal planning presentations. That's one thing that we've been really trying to build throughout this process is an interplay between the county and the municipalities. As you, as I noted in the, as in the driving ideas, that last one there, working together to plan the future, is a significant topic related to not just how the county relates to other state and regional agencies, but most importantly, with the municipalities and all of the citizens in the county. So we've invited the municipal planning commissions and staff to present to our planning commission, just give a sense of where they are with, with their planning and what they see as the major challenges and possible ways that the county might help overcome those challenges. We have a couple of more municipalities that, that were scheduled and had to be rescheduled, but we are getting those on the calendar to round out the, the eight municipal presentations.
And let me just say really quick, thank you for making that possible, because I know that was one of the concerns that we had early on, was how the towns would fit into the overall process. And I know some in the past, and I'm not talking about the recent past, but very, very distant past, felt that in previous incarnations of the master plan, they weren't, you know, taken into account as well as they could have been. So I really want to thank both of you for making sure that municipalities have been included in such a respectful way this time, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and I'll touch on a couple of things that we're thinking about in terms of how to really build off of that as well, so, thank you. Just to, just as a reminder, in addition to the information that we've been sharing with the Planning Commission over the last nine months, there are a few things that were undertaken even prior to last summer that we're using to help inform this process. One of them is the Economic Development and Land Use Study. The Housing Study was completed towards the end of last year. We did a Rural Villages Report, and we also completed a Transportation Master Plan in 2023. So those are all also foundational sources of information. Just to highlight the ways that we're also trying to make sure that we're leveraging the wisdom in, in this building as well as within other agencies at the county level. We have monthly meetings with Department of Planning and Land Management staff, and periodic meetings with staff from other county departments and agencies, just to kind of keep everybody in the loop, and these will be especially important as preliminary recommendations start to come out, so that we can get a sense from, from our folks who are dealing with, with some of these topics on a day-to-day basis, get a sense from them of where there might be some particular opportunities or challenges with any of the recommendations. We've been really trying to make sure that we've been reaching out to the public and engaging them throughout this process, so that we don't get to the end of the process and then have a big unveiling and, and people feel like they haven't been involved at all. So you see here a few of the ways that we've been doing that. I'm going to focus on two things in particular. One is an initial survey that we put out there for folks at the beginning of the fall last year, and then the other is the series of open houses. So just really quickly, we had an initial online survey. We had, that, that was two versions of that. One was an open-ended survey where people could provide any responses that they wanted. The other was a, a little bit quicker and easier multiple-choice survey. So we had a hundred responses plus to the open-ended survey, and almost four hundred responses to the multiple-choice survey, which we thought was a decent response rate. Folks in, who responded were kind of diverse in age and weighted a little more heavily towards the Eldersburg and Westminster area zip codes. Some of the things that we heard in those survey responses that I think are important to carry forward into our discussions include strong support for two key areas. The first was a commitment to ag land preservation and supporting that rural lifestyle and economy that people really strongly associate with Carroll County, and the other is managing growth in responsible ways, so ensuring that development occurs timed with the provision of public services and facilities, and we're not overwhelming our, our ability to serve, serve development. The greatest concern was around capacity and, and quality of our schools, water and sewers services, and the need to prevent or improve traffic congestion. We did have strong support for providing parks, recreational facilities, walking trails, and bicycle pedestrian facilities. That's been kind of consistent, both in the initial survey as well as the open houses, and this is something that we hadn't really talked about before. So that's an, kind of a new focus area that I want to make sure we, we keep on the radar screen. There was a lot of support for economic development that's located appropriately and especially that can employ county residents. And one geographic difference that I really want to point out, many in the southern part of the, of the county feel that that area really cannot absorb more, more growth, and that the, the remaining land in that area should be protected and preserved. So that was one thing that I wanted to, to highlight with our initial survey responses.
I'm curious, I mean, that's a designated growth area. When it says many, out of a hundred and seventy thousand, what's many? A dozen?
I would have to go back and calcu, you know, calculate those responses. Like I, like I tried to highlight here, that, that was a geographic area, so, or, you know...
Yeah, I understand.
The folks down there, a lot of the responses that we got from folks down there had this sort of sentiment expressed.
I mean, and again, nicely put, we have people all over the county that want to be the last one to move here.
Then I wanted to highlight some of what we heard at our open houses. So these were held during the months of February and early March. We had over two hundred and eighty people attend, and we received over two hundred comments as part of those. Our largest open house was in the Eldersburg area where we had about a hundred people attend. Generally speaking, we had those divided, those open houses divided into stations, and those were grouped by the driving ideas. I want to thank you all for your support in trying to get the word out about those and, and attend them if you could. I'm just going to go through a few of the, sort of the big takeaways that we had from each of those stations. You can see on your slides the, the themes for our housing station. I just want to, I'll just highlight the conclusions that we took away from the, the comments that we received. The big thing with housing is that we received mixed and often opposing opinions on housing needs, both in terms of type and location, and I think this is just going to be something we really have to, we have to figure out. There is not one solution to how we want to approach housing in the county. This will be a huge topic of discussion for the Planning Commission and, and you all, and really is a significant area that we'll need to work with the towns on in terms of what the, that mutual support can look like related to housing. The big takeaway from our economy station was that increasing economic development opportunity is important so that we can maintain the high quality of life that people enjoy here, but also that the, the county should not strive to become like some of our surrounding counties. There was also a recognition that investing in schools and infrastructure are an essential component of promoting economic growth here in the, in the county.
I noticed as well, there's a comment about energy generation. I'm going to imagine that had something to do with NPRP?
Yes.
Okay.
And solar, yeah, yep.
Thank you very much.
It is, not to cut you off there, it is interesting that they talk about not becoming like the surrounding counties. I don't know how we can do that with almost a third of the county at Ag Pres. We've kind of caused that never to happen. We'll never be Columbia, we'll never be Frederick. Just, just an observation.
Well, that's a good segue into the, the next section here. For the commitment to rural Carroll County Station, there was just really strong support for continuing ag land preservation and protecting the rural character of the county. We did hear some comments that some growth and change is healthy, and that that will help us to protect the rural character on the whole, but of course, you know, how that happens and how it happens in a way that balances all the different needs is, is another matter. On the, at the infrastructure station, we heard a huge focus on maintaining our existing infrastructure, making sure that what we already have in place is taken care of and functions well, and that we're building capacity within that existing infrastructure to keep up with the anticipated growth. I mentioned before that particular interest was shown for walking and biking facilities, and a real huge focus on maintaining and improving our schools, which a lot of people noted is, is why many people live here. At the Working Together to Plan the Future Station, there was just a lot of recognition about the importance of, of coordinating among many partners. In particular, people are concerned about the coordination needed to address funding improvements for schools, as well as just coordinating what the county's goals are with, with what the municipal goals are, and seeing how we can support each other. We also had a welcome station, and just, we did get some comments there, and the big takeaways from that are that there are kind of mixed feelings on the current state of the county and its future. So a lot of people are really happy with the quality of life and rural environment, while others fear that there is uncontrolled growth, rising crime, declining infrastructure, higher taxes, a lot of comments on Piedmont Reliability Project. So it was, it was a little bit of a mixed bag, and I think that just shows the diversity of opinions that people have in the county. I mentioned that in the, in the housing section. There is not a unanimous voice on a lot of these issues, so.
On that note, did you both happen to find that depending on where the open house was held, certain comments or concerns would predominate over others?
Yeah, for sure. In the Eldersburg area, there was a big, the schools were a really, really big concern there. I think in the Tonnytown area, it was a lot of ag preservation. I think that was also probably where we heard some of the more, like a higher number of comments on the power lines. So I'd have to go back and look at all of the responses to try and segment them out by individual location. We did have a, we did ask people when they attended to put a dot on a map to show where they were, where they lived, just so we could kind of see how was, for instance, the Tonnytown open house mostly drawing people from Tonnytown or were they coming from other places? Because we did make clear that people could attend any of the open houses, depending on what was most convenient for them. They tended to cluster around the locations where the open houses were held, but we did have at each one, people from other areas. So sometimes it's a little hard to track which comments were coming from which area for that reason.
Thank you very much.
In reference to some of the conclusions you show here, like we talk about uncontrolled growth, rising crime, and I would say, none of us, I don't believe, were at any of the work group sessions. Were they given any information statistically showing what is actually in place or is this all just based on opinion?
So at each of the stations, we had boards that had information. We also had documents that were available. We posted everything online as well. I don't know how many people looked at that ahead of time, but, and we had staff people available at each of those stations who could answer questions. As far as things like crime, we did not have those statistics available. I think that was what people who were attending were perceiving. And like I said, this was, this was our welcome station slash general comments area. So that was a little bit of a free-for-all in terms of what people felt they wanted to provide comments on.
No, understood. I was just curious, because like for the example of uncontrolled growth, if you get on, you know, Google and look up the last decade, we don't have much growth.
We've been had it for 40 or 50 years.
Correct. And then, you know, you look at the economic land use study on top of that and it shows how little, you know, industrial and commercial we have, which then plays into all these other factors. And yes, I understand people want more recreational and all these other things, but then, you know, not to be the bearer of bad news, but how do we fund that?
Well, that's what I was going to say too. Is there any talk on if we stop growth and build more schools and more infrastructure, somebody has to pay for it. And we hear pretty constantly that, you know, we haven't raised taxes since 1997 and we can't afford to do that. Well, it's, and the safety and the crime, you don't hear a whole lot because, again, I guess the fear, maybe that's part of the fear of surrounding counties, is are we going to get like them? And it's the schools, like supporting the schools is a good comment. Wanting more schools, that's, we don't do that. They need to talk to Carroll County Public Schools.
Yeah. I think those are all, those are all the types of questions that, that Planning Commission for sure, and you all as well, will have to wrestle with the battle of perception versus what some of our statistics show. And there may be that there are particular areas where that pinch is felt more acutely than others. So trying to, trying to find the ways to act on those in places where it's particularly relevant will be part of the, part of the job of the Planning Commission.
If I may, for just a second. So Daphne will probably get into it a little bit more in a minute, but we're very much wanting to make sure that we hear from everybody an opinion. So we don't want anybody to finish this process and feel that their voice was not heard. So we are progressively getting narrower and narrower with the scope of what we're looking at. So the open houses and general public, we've now narrowed down into work groups with industry experts and so on. What are the general things that they're hearing? And then from there, narrow down to Planning Commission and then narrow down to discussions with you all. So we're trying to get to narrow scope items that we can then dedicate the energy and so on to really look at. But we're, what Daphne has described so far is starting at that wide base of let's hear from everybody and hear the thoughts, and then we'll progressively narrow down focus to eventually get to the meat of the master plan.
Okay, before I get into work groups, I just want to highlight for you all as well as anybody who might be listening, we prepared a full report on our public outreach and feedback that's available on the master plan website, which is carol2035.org. So if anybody wants to read that in detail, we also provided verbatim all of the responses that we got. So you can be sure that those are available to read unadulterated. Okay. So as Chris mentioned, our, we went from the wide-ranging open house feedback to trying to focus on some very specific topics with smaller work groups to get a sense of what the Planning Commission should be considering relative to agriculture, economy, and housing. Why these three? The economy and housing was because we had two studies that we commissioned to support this master plan effort. And we wanted to have a group of folks dig into those and try to figure out what needed to be factored into our master plan process from those studies. So that was the Economic Development and Land Use Study and the Housing Study. We also felt it was important to have a group focused on agriculture because that is such a significant part of our, of our economy, of our land use, of our character. And so we wanted to make sure that we had a group of folks pulled together to help inform discussions on the long-term viability of agriculture in Carroll. So the goal was to provide some recommendations for the Planning and Zoning Commission to work off of, to consider including in the master plan. The intent was always that whatever came out of the work groups would be filtered with the Planning Commission, with the public, with you all, and developed further. So for sure, there will be a lot of recommendations that need some significant research and discussion and further development. These work groups have been meeting two times a month since early May. Each of them were comprised of about 25 to 30 people who were involved in the respective fields of the three work groups, as well as some municipal representatives, county agency representatives, and members of the general public. Last point there, work group reports will be shared with the Planning and Zoning Commission in October. We are still scheduling, figuring out what exactly that schedule will be. And that information will be available before too long, when folks could expect to have those work group reports presented.
So are all the work groups at this point completed or is there a sense of, well, maybe we should prolong them a little bit, add a couple more meetings? To that point that you made about winnowing things down, is there maybe an idea that, you know, we create more select groups from the more general work groups? I mean, what, is there like a, is there a process for proceeding at this point?
So we, when we, when we organized the work groups, we put out a specific meeting schedule so that people who were committing to those work groups could say, yes, I can do this. And it wasn't going to be prolonged indefinitely. We are, I know for sure the housing work group is extending by at least one meeting to try to get through all of their preliminary recommendations. The agriculture work group just completed their last meeting on Tuesday. And the economy work group meets tonight, so we'll see if they're able to get through all of their preliminary recommendations.
And I'm glad to hear that, by the way. I apologize, but I'm glad to hear that because if the members of these groups say we want to keep meeting because we have things we want to discuss, I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, I think it's a delicate balance trying to figure out how much you're asking people to devote time-wise and attention-wise to a particular topic, but also giving it its, the ability to discuss it. As I mentioned, we do and always have anticipated that the, once those preliminary recommendations are shared with the Planning Commission, that there will be a whole lot more discussion that needs to happen around them to further vet them, to further research them, that sort of thing. So like I said, we'll see how, how the economy work group goes tonight. And that's why I kind of hedged a little bit on the October because we just want to wait and see where we are in terms of being able to prepare and present a final report.
Thank you for being receptive to the members of those groups.
And if I may, if I can add, obviously, there are a lot of tools in the toolbox to go through this process of developing a master plan. And part of that is looking at what are the needs for additional research, additional work, and so on as we go along. And so as we bring this information to the Planning and Zoning Commission, if there is a desire of a specific topic, again, trying to winnow down to very specific things to look at, if there's a desire from their perspective to stand up a focus group of some sort to delve more into more detail of that, absolutely, that's something that we can do. That's in the toolbox and can be utilized.
Awesome, I'm really glad to hear that.
So I'll just run through of each of the work groups, some of the main topics that they've been covering. The agriculture work group, we were looking at trends in agriculture, threats and opportunities to sustaining viable agriculture in the county. Delving into the question of where we go from here with agriculture preservation, you saw just prior to this that we're upwards of 80,000 acres of our 100,000 acre goal. So what are we looking at for, you know, the next 10 years or so in agriculture preservation? Leveraging the agriculture sector as an economic driver? And then really talking about the next generation of farmers. If we're really looking at sustainable, viable agriculture industry here in Carroll, what does that next generation look like? And what do we need to be putting in place to help them thrive? The economy work group looked at economic activity in general in the county. They dug into the economic development and land use study findings and some of their implications. They also have been looking at locational considerations for enhanced economic development opportunities and where there might be needed public investment and regulatory policy changes to support economic activity here in the county. And then in terms of housing, the focus of the housing work group was to take the six needs identified in the housing study and do some discussion around the barriers and opportunities related to addressing them and some of the implications of those solutions. So they talked about housing variety, access to housing and homeownership support, connecting housing and jobs, and housing-related public investment and programs. I will say that the housing study identified these six needs, but housing is a huge, broad topic that touches on a lot of other areas of the county. And so what the housing work group talked about is probably not the extent of the housing discussion that needs to happen. So definitely, there are some preliminary recommendations that the group themselves have already identified and need some further analysis, further discussion. Okay, so that brings us up to today. Just a little preview of what comes next. As I mentioned, the work group recommendations will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, hopefully in October at some point. We would like to schedule another joint work session with the board and the Planning Commission to kind of just do a check-in on direction. We did that at the outset of the project, and I think it's a good time to, once we get those preliminary recommendations, to have another opportunity to touch base.
So you're figuring like October, November sometime?
Yes. I also wanted to float the idea of a possible, I don't know what we want to call it, but maybe summit, between the county and municipal elected officials and planning commissions. This is another way that we could maybe try to build that conversation with our municipalities and really talk about what they envision, what some of their opportunities and challenges are, what we envision, what our opportunities and challenges are, and how we can sort of mutually support each other in a collective approach to planning in the county. We will continue to do some public outreach and engagement as we are doing throughout this process. I forgot to mention earlier, we've been, we just started doing some outreach at summer farmers markets, so just getting the word out there. And we'll continue to find ways to, those touch points with the public. And then really, it's looking at some, a whole series of work sessions with the Planning Commission. I did want to note, just as a final note here, we're talking about a plan update and the direction that we got from you all in the Planning Commission at the outset of this project was we're updating the master plan. There wasn't, there wasn't, I didn't hear support for doing a massive overhaul of the existing plan. So what we're looking at is using all of the information and input that we've gathered to find where the tweaks to the existing plan should be, based on what we, what we know has been accomplished, what our current and projected desires and needs of the county are. That's the approach that we're taking. And again, we can, we can verify that at the joint work session and make sure we're all on the same course. Questions?
So thank you for that. I know back when, before we started really the process and before we started all the working groups, you know, I had, I had mentioned up here my hope and request that the working groups would, you know, really come up with some tangible recommendations and things like that for the board to look at and consider, particularly the housing working group. I voiced my concerns about how that group's doing and I want to make sure they're successful. I've had those conversations, I haven't been shy about that. The, and you've mentioned that the outreach to the municipalities, which are also the designated growth areas, and I think that is extremely important. They're all different, but there might be opportunities within those designated growth areas for the county to work with the municipality to come up with opportunities to create housing. Of course, that leaves the Freedom Area, which is, you know, as the board is essentially the de facto mayor and town council there. So I think that's also an area where we've really got to take a close look at, make sure we're doing things the right way. The zoning, the land use, does mixed use really get us what we need? The zoning, the land use, this mixed use, really get us what we need, things of that nature. So, I hope that the, in particular, the housing working group is really focused on this issue of tangible solutions. I mean, we can talk about affordability and equality and access and opportunity and path to ownership as much as we want. That's not going to change anything for anybody. I still believe very strongly that these, the focus in these designated growth areas are the way to go. And I, I look forward to seeing what I hope are some, some solutions there and the idea of working more closely with them and maybe even, you know, having a summit or something of that makes sense. But, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that the housing working group in particular may not fulfill that goal, but I know that there have been, it's evolving. And you're continuing to look at that as you move on because you have stated here that things are still, you know, changing as you move along. And if there's additional time needed, and that's, that's what we, I, I think the board, I can't speak for the other members of the board, but I think that's what we'd be willing to, to let you have because it's important to get things done, especially as people are devoting a lot of time to these. And that, that I recognize. And it is a lot of valuable time for people. Twice a month is, is not easy to do for some folks. So, for all the people involved with this, I'm, I'm very appreciative.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would agree with Commissioner Garen's comments. Also, I know staff's put in a huge amount of time, planning and zoning has put in a huge amount of time, but to Commissioner Garen's point, the, the folks in the community have put in a huge amount of time. And obviously, we're all grateful for that. I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, but I think I probably could on that note. But, one of the things I know as we're talking about these different, these different areas, and of course, we're looking at it right now at, at say, 50,000 feet up. I get that. But, and I'll just go back to Ag because this is the easy one to pick out that then falls into housing and all these other areas. Is there any conversation when they're looking at Ag Pres as to the cost basis of what it's going to take to get to that 20,000 roughly? Because we're looking, you know, give or take, it's probably $100 million, give or take. And I don't know if those that are having these discussions on any area, and I'm not, I'm just using that as an example, are they thinking about that? Because, you know, whether it's that, or like I said earlier, whether it's rec and parks, where, what's that going to cost us? What is that going to cost us all collectively? And I think, you know, whether it's, we don't want development, we do want development, how do we balance everything? I think that's something I'm hoping that they're all taking into consideration. I can't speak for them, and I don't know if there's really been any in-depth conversation on that, but I hope there at least is some.
We have had discussions in the Ag workgroup related to both, well, both an acknowledgement of the increasing cost per acre of preserving land and what that does to the ability to achieve the 100,000 acre goal. They have come up with a few preliminary recommendations that are looking at some creative ways that we can continue to preserve land, possibly without needing to put the same amount of money into it. So, not necessarily purchasing development rights or, or that, that purchase to place an easement on the property, but maybe there are some other ways that we can try to protect that land without incurring the same cost. So, we'll see where those, some of those recommendations go.
Sounds interesting. Look forward to hearing about it.
Yeah. Well, I think the word that you used there is balance. And that's, and that's the challenge that we all have.
Absolutely.
And especially you all as, as the, the final deciders of what the master plan will be. As Staffing mentioned, the direction we got from the very beginning was, was minor adjustments and tweaks, as it were. There's not some massive force requiring change. Some of you may remember BRAC, the BRAC program, when the bases realigned. We don't have, that impacted a lot of communities around the state. We don't have that kind of external influence that is requiring some massive change to our master plan. So, what we're endeavoring to do is, is identify what's happened over the past 10 years, what are some new things that, that we need to consider, what are the recommendations along those lines, and then what are the minor adjustments that we need to make to the plan? So, but as you said, balance is going to be the trick. These, the workgroups do not necessarily have the same viewpoint on certain things. There is, there is inherently some differences of opinions between agriculture, economic development, and housing. And, and our goal is to try and assimilate all that information to bring it all to you so then you can make the informed decision to see what kind of balance needs to be struck. I may be stating the obvious, but.
I think it needs to be, no, but I think it has to be said because I think to your point, you know, you have these different groups, and obviously, someone in that group may assume that A and B don't really connect, but they all connect.
Yes.
And I think sometimes people in the community look at that one area, but you have to look at them all collectively and collaboratively. So, again, appreciate all the hard work.
Yes, thank you.
And that's, that's kind of Commissioner Garen's stuff on housing, talks on housing was, was great. And, and my concern is, if, if I'm on the Housing Committee and I live in Manchester, my thoughts are totally different than somebody in Eldersburg. And we can't, we can't let Manchester or Eldersburg determine how Carroll County is. But, I think it, it would be a good thing to get the, the various jurisdictions involved that that's because they all have different needs and, and, and different stuff. And then you had mentioned, there was talk of where will Ag Pres be in 10 years? It probably won't be quite to the 100,000 acre goal. And, and like you said, if, if we spread that money out over 10 years, we might make it, but it's going to be harder to find properties, and it just keeps getting more expensive. But, that was a great program. And, and we've kind of emphasized that we agree with the goal. And, and so, I, you know, I think that, that has to go. And I'd be curious, for instance, and, and, and all these groups are great, but you've got diverse people, and sometimes you've got somebody on it with tunnel vision that, which doesn't help the county. It, it might help Manchester, but it, you know, it's like, I'll get yelled at for this one, but Lineborough wanting sewer, you know, it's, Finksburg's ahead of them and hadn't done real well with that, getting it. But, but, you know, you look at Eldersburg and Mount Airy as growth areas and the other jurisdictions, and then you look at Finksburg and, and the north end of the county, they don't have water and sewer. They have a whole different set of needs. So, it's, this, this is good, and, and I'm glad to hear you say, the goal isn't to throw this away and start over. It's, it's tweaks. But, one question, what's the state mandating we do? Like, I, I've spoke about affordable housing, and the state just amazed me. They want us to do affordable housing. We got some people in that housing group want bigger lots. That's not going to get there. And then our state raises every fee known to man and tax. So, you spend, if you don't watch, you spend 100 grand before you put a shovel in the ground. It, it can't be affordable. But, they've, have they mandated that we incorporate affordable housing into this?
So, one of the things that we need to make sure that is in this master plan that hasn't been in previous master plans is a specific housing element. That's a new required, state-required element that wasn't required the last time the plan was adopted. We had a, a chapter related to housing, but now we need to make sure that we include the housing element or, or we include something that meets the, the required information that, that is listed under the housing element. So, in terms of affordable housing, it's, it's a little vague exactly what they're looking for, but we do have to study housing, study what, what our current housing needs are, and, and then address the, oh, I'm going to, I'm losing the words. Affirmative, further, fair housing. Yeah, that's the word.
I'm so proud that I remembered it.
Yeah. I blanked on that.
I think it's actually affirmatively, furthering.
Furthering.
Fair housing, yes.
Say that 10 times.
But, that was, the, the requirements of that housing element was, was sort of what we, the basis for doing the housing study so that we can take that information, incorporate it as necessary into our, the way we address housing in the master plan and meet those requirements of the housing study. I mean, I'm sorry, the housing element.
Well, like I, you know, said a little earlier, I'm grateful for the participation that you were affording municipalities in the process, and also the fact that you're allowing these workgroups to, to take more time to discuss some of the issues that my friends up here have pointed out as well. I think that's, you know, we can't do anything less than that. And I really do appreciate that you've built in the time to, to make that possible, that these individuals can have that time to, to work through some of these issues. So, I very much, and thank you both for what you've done too.
Thank you.
Sure. Just really quickly, I do want to note, the, the workgroups are working through these issues, but we, we want to make sure that they're not becoming proxies for the planning commission and what they're authorized or required to do. So, just trying to find that right balance with level of detail and level of recommendations from the workgroups versus the planning commission is, is one thing that we need to try to find the balance on.
Anything else, guys?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm staying up here.
I was going to say, the two of you look pretty familiar. Didn't I just see?
No, no, that was good. Now, we want to go to on a request for a public hearing for change in ordinance.
Okay. Hi Denise.
Hello Denise.
Good morning. She magically appeared.
Let's pull out my packet of notes here. All right. So, we are here to request authorization to proceed to a public hearing for revisions to the Employment Campus Zoning District. Just a little refresher, you had requested that the Planning and Zoning Commission reexamine this zoning district, particularly with respect to the development review process and the uses that are allowed in the zone. You also had specifically noted that the purpose of the district, as envisioned in the master plan and stated in our, our zoning ordinance, should be maintained and that the focus should be on incorporating more flexibility into the development process and removing regulatory hurdles to the approval of desired uses. So, that was the direction that we took to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They looked at this on June 17th for the first time. We presented the direction, a little bit of history on the Employment Campus District and areas for consideration for revision. And then they discussed it at two different meetings, July 9th and July 15th. And I'm going to run through the proposed changes, as well as just a little bit of their, their rationale for it, and see if you have any changes that you want to make to what they are recommending. This is a lot of text, but I want to focus here just on the purpose and intent of the Employment Campus District. This is really meant to be a, a planned employment center, you know, that has a campus-like setting with the idea of attract, attracting employers of highly skilled workers and primarily higher paying jobs. And so, you can see on that list some of the objectives that are part of the zoning, zoning district description that are meant to help achieve that. So, we first touched on with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the development review process, which had been noted as potentially difficult to undertake. So, the way the zoning district is written right now, it requires a development plan be submitted that shows details for the entire site, including building shape and location. And this level of detail as a first step in this process tends to make subdivision and/or gradual development of the site a little difficult. So, we had a couple of proposals for discussion with the planning commission. The first was to replace the development plan language with the requirement to go through the site plan review process. Most of what was required as part of that development plan is already required as part of the site plan review process. So, the proposal that they discussed was to just go through the regular site plan review process rather than this extra additional step upfront. That meant that we could strike some language related to parking, landscaping, solar energy conversion facilities that are already covered in the site plan review process. And, but we did want to add some language, requiring the developer to demonstrate in their plan submittal how the purpose and intent of the district is being met. So, we didn't lose that, that focus on this employment campus as being something special and distinct from other zoning districts that we have. So, the Planning Commission discussed how the purpose and intent of the district could be met, even if developed in a piecemeal fashion through the site plan review. And ultimately, they accepted the text amendments as presented by staff on July 15th. And the next series of slides just details those. And this would be part of the, the actual text amendments. So, I'll run through those just for the record. There was really no change to the purpose and intent, other than the underlined text, which is to clarify that a development may be comprised of multiple contiguous lots which should be depicted on an individual site plan. As I noted, because we would replace the site plan, the development plan process with the site plan process, section B and C related to development plan and parking would be stricken. Outdoor storage and signage would stay the same, but landscaping also covered under the site plan process would be stricken. Architecture remains with just a change to the reference to a site plan as opposed to a development plan, and incorporating the language about harmonious design, which reflects the purpose and intent of the, of the district.
I appreciate that that was included.
Solar energy conversion was stricken. That's covered under other parts of our ordinance. And principal uses reference remains the same. Under the mix of uses, we just added a, some clarifying language that the mix would apply to the entirety of the contiguous lots in the employment campus so that if it were subdivided, you would still maintain the idea of each of those lots working together as part of a, a complete unit. As I mentioned, site plan review, which was already an option in the district, is just noted as being required with that added language that the developer shall submit a written and/or graphic explanation as to how it, the development meets the purpose and intent of the Employment Campus District. As far, the next section is, is much easier. As far as the permitted uses, the district allows for a mix of permitted uses, which includes hotels, professional and business offices, trade schools, conference centers, recreation areas. It has a number of conditional uses as well, one of which is light manufacturing. It does allow for some limited retail service and restaurant uses and some limited residential uses as well. So, the only proposal that we had for their discussion, and of course, they were free to discuss anything else, but our proposal- but our proposal was just to make light manufacturing a permitted use rather than a conditional use to allow that to move through the process more easily. So, the planning commission discussed examples of light industrial in the county and other uses that could occur in the employment campus district. They did recognize the need for more flexibility as reported by the Department of Economic Development. And they accepted the text amendments as presented by staff on July 15th. So, the only thing I have on that is you'll see under light manufacturing in our use table, it moves from conditional to principal permitted. One last thing I wanted to note, while we didn't raise it as an issue for discussion, the planning commission did express a desire to limit building height in the employment campus district when adjoining residential properties. So, currently, the maximum allowable height in the district is 60 feet. And the planning commission wanted to add language that basically duplicates the bulk requirement language in the commercial, for commercial industrial districts and apply that to the employment campus properties that adjoin properties in residential districts. So, this would limit the height, in this case, to 35 feet. Now, I will note that the language they approved talks about residential districts. So, that's our, our zones, our 10,000, our 20, our 40. It does not talk about residential uses. So, if a, if an employment campus adjoined a conservation zone or an agricultural zone, this limit would not apply in those cases.
If, if they go to 35 feet, you might as well take hotels out of the description because nobody's gonna come here.
Yeah. So, you see there, the, the text amendment that would put that change into place. So, our request today is to have your permission to schedule a public hearing in regards to the potential amendments to section 158.081 Employment Campus District.
Right now, it might be helpful for people to know, where, where in the county right now does this designation apply?
There are two areas that have employment campus zoning on them. One is the Delaney property that's down in the Freedom area off of Clees Mill Road. And that's county-owned property. The other is just to the west of the landfill. I forget how many, I think that's about 80 acres maybe, also owned by the county. And that's right off of 140. Those are the only two that I know are currently zoned employment campus.
Well, I'll make a motion to direct staff to schedule a public hearing in regard to potential amendments to County Code Section 158.081 Employment Campus.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
So, I, I just, I mean, I mentioned it earlier today. Some of these changes make a lot of sense to me. But I, I meant, as I mentioned earlier today, I, I just, I would much rather the board look at these changes at once if we could do that. And that's a lot to do instead of in a vacuum as a, as a one-off change. So, I'm still advocating for we take significant changes like this and we get into what essentially is our own opportunity to have a working group or a discussion, which we've done in the past, and then take a look at it that way. I still think that's the best way forward for things like this. I just do. I, I think there's some questions here that we need to think about. And taking some of the requirements on how things are supposed to proceed with these employment campuses out of the ordinance and into the site planning process, I think I've got some concerns with that as well. So, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be ready to do this today, but I still am advocating that at some point. And we're gonna have to figure out how we can do that because it's gonna get too big. It's gonna be too much. But it sounds like we do have some issues with some of the text amendments that we want to change. I think we might even discuss one later today, which sounds like a very valid concern. But I just, I just don't like doing these things in, in this manner. Just my personal preference.
Is it doable to, and I understand what you're saying, but, but do we need to do bits and pieces as time goes on? Is, is the other way something that's never gonna happen? I don't, you guys, you sat here, I forget what it was, we asked you to do something and you were like, "We're busy." And, and so, how much can you do? Because, you know, it makes sense that you look at everything together, but is it, is it doable? Is it practical?
So, yes. So, looking very big picture. So, as you know, and Daphne just described, we're going through the master plan process. So, a logical next step after the master plan process is complete, when, when you all have decided the, the direction and priorities and so on from, from county perspective, we then look at a comprehensive zoning process, right? So, that then looks at land use and, and what things are zoned. The next step after that is looking at the zoning code to make sure that the zoning code is in line with those land uses in the master plan and so on. We last went through that a couple of years ago. It's a lengthy process to, to review the entire zoning code. I think it took better than three years to go through that process. So, it's absolutely our intent to go through that logical progression. What we're seeing right now in some of the codes that we're looking at right now, such as the employment campus and, and solar and, and things like that, there are other driving forces that kind of necessitate that we look at them earlier. And so, we're, we're, we are bringing those kind of piecemeal, as it were, because there's a driving factor that, that requires that we look at them.
I didn't even think about other driving.
Yes.
Factors that.
Yeah. So, certainly, there are, if you, if you talk to Anastasia, our zoning administrator, she has a book of lists of, of things that she would like to clarify and address and so on. And we absolutely intend to, when we get to that point, to, to have these much larger work sessions to delve into the zoning code and what changes need to be made and so on to conform to the master plan that we all agreed to. So, it's, it's in the works. And, and if any of these codes, these land use type text amendments come up that you say, you know, "We're just not ready to discuss" and we want to leave them for that larger process, we absolutely can do that. It's just, there are sometimes these external forces that we need to get our, our, our solar codes in line with state law and so on, that, that we're bringing them kind of early in the overall big picture process.
Yeah. Because we had talked like with solar, for instance, if, if we wait too long, the state might tell us what to do instead of us try to be proactive. So, yeah, I, I didn't even think about that. And you're not shy. You'll tell us when that's the case.
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope. No, sir.
We have a motion and a second. And the public hearing would be one of the public hearings that's during this meeting.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, approval to purchase a GIS data upgrade.
Morning.
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 Morning again, Chris.
Yes, I'm.
It's a marathon day for you.
Yes, it is.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Department of Planning and Land Management requests your approval to purchase the Planometric GIS data upgrade from NV5 Geospatial in the amount of $55,775. This purchase is being made via a Maryland, State of Maryland CATS Plus contract. The amount is approved in the FY26 budget.
So, happy to answer any questions, but essentially, the type of data we're talking about is planometric data, which is GIS data that represents physical features on the landscape, things like buildings, roads, trails, utility poles, those sorts of things. And as, that data is captured from aerial flights that the State of Maryland does periodically. Obviously, that data becomes, it's no longer valid the day after the flight occurs, right? So, our intent is to keep, maintain that data to the best quality as possible because it is a valuable data source, not only for the county employees, but it's also used extensively by our development community to represent what's on people's properties and so on to facilitate that, that project, those types of projects. So, most recently, the state did a flight this past spring. And so, this contract would be to hire the firm that did that, that flight and through the state contract to update our data. So, it's current as of this past spring.
Motion to approve the purchase of the Planometric GIS data upgrade from NV5 Geospatial in the amount of $55,775.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, approval to purchase Pony Run Park playground installation.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Department of Recreation and Parks requests your approval to purchase the installation of a new playground at Pony Run Park from Game Time Care of Cunningham Recreation in the amount of $297,597.16. This purchase will be made via, made through an Omni Partners contract that was competitively bid and awarded to Game Time Care of Cunningham Recreation. This amount is within the FY26 adopted budget.
So, this playground that we're replacing is 22 years old. And this kind of demonstrates our ongoing efforts to replace aged infrastructure and our facilities. The playground will be designed, or is designed presently, for multiple age groups and physical limitations. It's barrier-free, ADA compliant, very colorful, and hopefully, years and years of lots of fun.
Motion to approve the purchase for the installation of a new playground at Pony Run Park from Game Time Care of Cunningham Recreation in the amount of $297,597.16.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, exterior sidewalks and curbs along Willis and Court Street near the Vietnam Memorial.
Morning, Messengers.
Morning.
Morning, gentlemen.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval to award a contract to form and repour exterior sidewalks and curbs along Willis and Court Streets near the Vietnam Memorial, including three ADA ramps to Caples Concrete of Westminster, Maryland in the amount of $27,000. Bids were solicited from two contractors and the proposals are summarized below. The bid amount is within the adopted budget.
Commissioners, the exterior sidewalks and curbs along Willis and Court Street near the Vietnam Memorial are being replaced and repoured to improve safety, accessibility, and durability. Currently, those conditions are very poor. The existing infrastructure is worn, not compliant with ADA standards. With this work, three new ADA compliant ramps will be installed along with the project. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time for you.
Does this include the, the, what I'd call interior walks that go in there?
It's phase two. So, this one here is gonna be phase one, which is the exterior sidewalks, which is, the reason we did that is those sidewalks are really deteriorating. And we got a lot of public going to court, a lot of use on those sidewalks there, more than we have in the interior. But the interior will be done, to answer your question, spring, next spring.
And the intention is it'll all be replaced with traditional concrete walks?
Ninety percent of the interior will be. We're gonna keep some of the cobblestone, slate stone effect to kind of keep it looking decent, rusted kind of around like memorials.
Yeah.
But at least you can take the wheelchair up to that area and visit it. But in and around the memorials will be still the, the flagstone looking type sidewalk.
Commissioner Gordon?
Move the Board of Commissioners award a contract for concrete work along Willis and Court Street near the Vietnam Memorial to Caples Concrete in the amount of $27,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right.
Justin, I want to thank you for your help with some issues down in Maskey recently. Folks down there really appreciate it.
Not a problem.
For stepping in on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, approval to purchase two John Deere Gators.
Good morning.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to purchase two John Deere Gators from Deere and Company in the amount of $47,589.91. This purchase will be made via State of Maryland Grounds Maintenance Equipment Contract that was competitively bid. This, the amount is within the FY26 approved budget.
Gator for Hoshawa will be a replacement unit of an 18-year-old, while the additional gator for community parks will be utilized across 27 parks. Both vehicles will be used to transport staff and tools to support trail maintenance, including inspection, repairs, clearing down trees, assisting lost and/or potentially injured hikers. These gators are essential to ensure county parks and trails remain safe and meet county standards. The used gator then will be auctioned off and should bring between 1,000 to 3,000.
Motion to approve the purchase of two John Deere Gators from Deere and Company at a cost of $47,589.91.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, a Kimco conveyor, approval to purchase.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to purchase one Kimco conveyor from Kimco USA in the amount of $148,559.1. This purchase will be made via State of Kentucky contract that was competitively bid. This, the amount is within the FY26 approved budget.
This additional portable equipment will be used throughout the county at all salt domes as it is needed. When bulk salt is delivered, it is dumped at the dome entrances and then moved inside by loaders. Currently, they climb salt mounds to fill the domes, which creates significant risk of rollovers, injuries, and structural damage to the domes. After winter storms, the trucks must also be emptied of any leftover salt returned to the domes. The conveyor will streamline this process by efficiently moving the salt back into the domes by reducing time, labor, and environmental impact while improving safety and preventing dome damage. The conveyor should be here before the coming winter weather.
Motion to approve the purchase of one Kimco KC2470 SSD conveyor from Kimco USA at a cost of $148,559.1.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. Your time's appreciated.
Thank you for yours.
And now, water, wastewater inspection services for Mineral Hill property.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning to you.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for water and wastewater inspection services for the Mineral Hill property to Johnson, Merriman, and Thompson, Inc. of Hunt Valley, Maryland in the not-to-exceed amount of $82,419. This award will be made via a competitively bid term contract. The cost of these services, or these inspection service, services is developed, funded, and is paid as part of the Public Works Agreement process for new development. No county funds will be used for this contract.
Gentlemen, as part of the, the review and approval process for new development, third-party water and wastewater inspection services are paid for the developer under the requirements of the Public Works Agreement. Inspection services are rotated through our, our consultants. The consulting firm is provided with construction plans and provides an estimate of the number of man-hours and costs needed to, to provide full-time inspection services during the construction period. The time parameters and scope of work for, for this property are provided within the briefing paper. I believe it's 88 working days. And the, the, the amount of work is spelled out in detail. Any questions for me?
Motion to award a contract for water and wastewater inspection services for the Mineral Hill property to Johnson, Merriman, and Thompson, Incorporated, in the not-to-exceed amount of $82,419.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Approval to purchase medical supplies for fire and EMS.
Morning.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Fire and EMS requests your approval to purchase medical supplies for fire EMS from Boundtree Medical in the amount of $49,990.16. This purchase will be made utilizing Fairfax County, Virginia contract that was competitively bid. This amount is approved in the FY-26 budget.
This is for IV infusion pumps, which will be assigned to all EMS units, particularly for pediatric population. It's soon to be mandated with one of our medications, and the other medications are mandated in 2026, so upcoming soon.
Motion to approve the purchase of medical supplies to Boundtree Medical in the amount of $49,990.16.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions or, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on the phone?
I have no one on the line, sir.
Do we have any public comment here?
We do. Mr. Andrew Manning.
Good morning, commissioners. Hope you're all doing well today. I'm doing exceptionally well. Found a good pair of pants at TJ Maxx yesterday. My name is Andrew Manning. I'm here to speak, as you can see, today. I am here to speak about three things, if I can make them all in time. Number one, something caught my eye today, and that was listening to Mr. Guerin talk about he wants to consolidate all his topics in the one particular meeting, whatever. Something, the last meeting caught my eye as well, and that was the guy that was here about the child lots. I don't know if you remember him. You stepped out right before, Mr. Kyler, right before he really got his chance to speak, but if you listened to that guy and you took a look at him, he obviously went through the proper avenues and channels to get in front of you today. He had that guy with the haircut or whatever sitting next to him, talking about it. You could see him, you know, his arm visibly shaken, and as, as things further progressed, and he saw that he wasn't going to get the results he wanted, his arms shaking more and more and more. And it was a great visual representation of, you know, he's obviously an older guy, probably didn't have a whole bunch of money. Maybe he did when he bought the property, but the thing that stuck out to me was the overarching narrative that you guys decided that, well, if we help this guy out, then other people are going to come to us with their problems. And honestly, that's what you were elected to do, is to deal with people's issues, not just Jim Dewise, who wanted a Bobcat for $400,000, and a five Ford trucks that are probably going to be used for personal vehicles for another $300,000. So, that moves on to my second thing. I missed a perfect opportunity to make a normal public comment today. That's about the cats. When my mom passed away five years ago, things were not looking good until I was going to Home Depot one night around 8:30, 9 o'clock at night in the summer, saw four cats on the side of the sidewalk there, right between Lowe's and Target, four kittens. Over the span of three nights, the first night I got my first one, the black one, Princess. The second night I got Thurgood and Clancy. And the last night, thankfully, I got the last and fourth one, Kiwi. Had to grab them by hand. I didn't know what traps were at the time. Of course, they bit me. I had to shove, throw them in my car, took them home. And thanks to the efforts of that guy you saw here earlier, speaking, the old guy that had to sit down, I know him. I worked with the Humane Society. I have a simple solution that doesn't involve licensing. That would be to make an organized effort. If you know that there's a cat colony somewhere, you make an organized effort to gather people, gather volunteers. The cat women are very protective of their cats. They're very protective of their cat areas. They're not going to want to give out this information. If the Humane Society wants to do something, you organize an event with volunteers, fundraise money, and that's the way you do it. You hit a particular area. I can tell you there's a bunch of cats up there by Lowe's and Green Turtle, all in those woods and stuff. I've seen them myself. Lastly, thirdly, I'm not allowed to bring my props here anymore, my signs. As you can see, fortunately, there's a perfect example for you guys. As soon as you're leaving here today, as well as the police department, I let them know about this, you have an easy towing guy right there at the 7-Eleven who has zip-tied his sign to a, to a sign, right? And as we know, these signs are government property. That would extend to the signed rail. So, just when you look by, I've talked to the signed rail itself. I told him he wants to be an example of what not to do, how not to prevent your business, and do not zip-tie your signs to other signs. Hopefully, you got it all figured out.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Admin session open. Commissioners, any thoughts?
Not for me today.
I would like to bring up outdoor advertising signs, 158 dot point 115, off the premises as signs. I was approached by a billboard company and an attorney that they would like to look at consolidating and relocation of some of the signs, and, and the ultimate result would probably be less billboards in Carroll County. They showed me two or three in my district where there's three, four, five on a property, and they would maybe go down to one, maybe go down to two, but, but do that. They've looked at some possible changes. So, I would like to put on our agenda that we ask staff to review this and come back with a recommendation.
No objection. Do we need to vote on that? I have no objections to it, but...
No, technically, any one of us can put something on the agenda, but I just, I wanted to be public about it, and if any of you threw stuff at me or something, I could reconsider. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Closed minutes.
How about if I throw something at you? Does that count?
Yeah, no.
We don't do that in open session.
You're too far away.
We do that in closed session.
That's why we have closed.
Closed minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the closed minutes, meet, closed meeting minutes for land acquisition on July 31, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additions or changes to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Tim? Sam?
Agenda review.
Do you want to introduce the gentleman?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Before going to close, I was going to do that.
Yes.
I thought during your...
Yes. You, you want to do agenda review first, or...
Yeah, do you mind?
Nope, that's fine.
We'll, we'll do whatever you say.
We're still legal? That's a change.
Thank you.
Morning, Wanda. How are you today?
Good morning.
Doing well, thank you.
Okay, agenda review. Monday, August 11th shows nothing. Tuesday, August 12th, Commissioners Gordon and Kyler will head to Mako. Wednesday will be at Mako. Farm Museum Board Meeting at 9:30 a.m., Commissioner Vigliotti. Board of Ed Meeting at 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday. Right now, shows no commissioners attending. Thursday, again, Mako. Friday, again, Mako. Saturday, again, Mako. And Commissioner Vigliotti has the podcast.
Wait a sec. Hold on, because I, because Commissioner Rothstein is not with us. I was forwarded to this week, so am I doing two weeks in a row? Am I actually...
We discussed that last week.
Yeah, we discussed it, but I don't...
I'll do it. I don't mind it. I don't mind. I just want to make sure that I'm not going to, like, cut somebody off or... Oh, Roberta wants to do it.
I'll be at Mako.
Now, the following week's me.
Totally up to you.
But I won't be here most of next week.
So, I got to do three weeks in a row?
No, 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 no. The following...
Sounds like a trilogy.
But I was going to say I could flip and do yours, but I won't be here.
Honestly, if you want me to do, I could do two weeks. It doesn't bother me. Really doesn't.
I'd say you're excited about this. Isn't going to mess up your preparation, is it?
No, but I'll give it a shot.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
The agenda seems, okay. Monday, August 18th, no activities. Tuesday, August 19th, Commissioner Kyler's chamber breakfast. And, and what it is is what it is, but we paid for me to go to have to listen to Commissioner Rothstein, and now he's not going to have to listen to me. It doesn't seem fair. You don't want to take that speech, too, do you?
What, you want me to speak for you at the...
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I could do that.
Yeah.
Put on a fake mustache, try to pass myself off as you.
Yeah. 9:00 a.m., planning and zoning, Commissioner Gordon. 2:00 p.m., Veterans Advisory, Commissioner Gordon and Kyler. On Wednesday, Carroll Community College, Commissioner Kyler. ESAC, Commissioner Guerin. And this says that you cannot be here on that Thursday, Commissioner Guerin.
That's right.
8:00 a.m., closed admin. 9:00 a.m., priority Carroll. Motorola Command, central contract renewal, judicial dialogue software contract renewal, LED lighting upgrades to athletic fields at Freedom Park. Approval of resolution for spring amendment to Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. Introduction of comment letter for Townehamsted, contract award bulk road salt, spending authority snow removal services, contract award ongoing tree trimming, spending authority various blacktop products, contract award water storage tank, contract award replacement of water valve bolts, approval to purchase four Ford Explorers, approval to purchase two Cam Superline trailers, public comment, open admin, closed minutes for the legal and personal. Agenda review. Friday, Saturday shows no activities, and Commissioner Kyler, not Commissioner Vigliotti, has that podcast.
Commissioner.
You're okay if I do one, right?
Yeah, I guess you can.
How about that number six? Would you prefer we hold that off?
It's all yours.
Thank you, commissioners. I'd like to make an introduction to you. I'd like to introduce to you and our viewing public Timothy F. Belloni Esquire. He's a partner in the law firm of Joseph Greenwald in Lake, out of Greenbelt, and he's a former member of the House of Delegates from 1979 to 1995. He has almost 40 years extensive experience in federal, state, and administrative law all over the state of Maryland, and he has already entered his appearance on behalf of Carroll County in the NPR matter that's currently pending before the Public Service Commission. And he appeared at the Public Service Commission hearing, on the scheduling, scheduling hearing several weeks ago. He's asked to talk to you in closed session about, give you some legal advice as to where we are here in the NPR litigation and where we could be headed. So, I asked you to give him a warm welcome and...
And you decided he needed to see us for about an hour to decide if he really wanted to meet us?
It's too late.
Too late?
He's in. He cashed a check. He cashed a check. He's in.
Yeah.
I asked that you take him, legal advice before personnel, so we can get him on his way.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, we need a motion to...
Close for legal and personnel.
Legal and close for personnel, and, and after that, we will adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great.